Participate in our tenant rights town hall panel discussion. At this point, I would like to ask our three speakers to introduce themselves. And then whoever would like to do first can kick off their presentation.
Yeah, thanks. Okay, I'll probably be going first, I suppose. My name's Nate Johnson. I'm an assistant attorney with the city of Wichita. Before this, I worked with Kansas Legal Services, learned a whole lot from Steve, actually. Did quite a bit of eviction defense landlord tenant related work. I continue to do similar sort of stuff with the city of Wichita, the Wichita Housing Authority and working with the Housing Community Services Department. I'm really happy to be here and thank you so much for everybody coming.
Thanks, Nate. Thank you, everyone, for coming. My name's Steve Minson. I'm a lawyer with Kansas Legal Services. And somewhere around a majority of my practice, 50% or so is landlord tenant matters. And I wish we had more resources. We could, I could keep two or three lawyers busy full time just doing landlord tenant cases. But I'm glad to be here to talk with you and answer questions. I'm happy to stay late if you, if you want to talk more. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Kalen Nethercott. I'm not an attorney. So let's start with that. My title is Neighborhood Inspection Administrator. I'm with the city of Wichita and we're housed inside the Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department in the Royal Reagan Building. So my role in all of this is my neighborhood inspectors are the ones who would respond to complaints that tenants would make regarding issues with their living circumstances, leaks, electricity that doesn't work, general housing concerns or property concerns. So that's our role in all of this. And I too would be happy to answer individual questions after the session as you'd like for me to do.
And I kind of think how we're, we're going to approach this this morning. I'm going to give sort of a fundamentals of landlord tenant law, not as much a directly legal perspective, but hopefully offering a bit more a practical perspective, making the law a little easier to use or understand. The resources that I'll be referring to are also available through the eviction resolution program website. The city's been working with a program over at Sedgwick County District Court. I'm put on by the Office of Judicial Administration, who's done a really great job of collecting the resources that you might need if you're facing any kind of landlord tenant issue, community resources, legal form links, information about the court, people to contact, things like that. So I'll kind of start there. I think then we'll maybe transition to a bit more of a tenant perspective on the fundamentals of kind of landlord tenant law. And then we can kind of also wrap it into how housing code, thinking about enforcing your rights, things like that, many questions to maybe bring it home. And we've got a good amount of time here, I think. So if folks do have questions, straight up, I'll kind of switch up our normal presentation style and just say, please ask as we go through. And all of these resources again should be available. It seems through video and recorded otherwise. But this kind of presentation and information is available in a couple of places. The city of Wichita Housing Community Service Department website. And again, the eviction resolution program website as well. I'll have that information if I can operate a PowerPoint. So we'll see. I don't think the clicker. So if ever, yeah, we're good, I think, doing this. So, um, so this will focus a bit on evictions too. We'll probably branch out a little bit with some of the questions through the whole life cycle of the tenancy. But we also kind of, you know, want to think about what our rights are from the perspective of, you know, how are they enforced otherwise from a landlord's perspective too? So if we're in an eviction case, what can we do? How does it get to that point? It's kind of the most dire circumstance, but other issues such as habitability, livability, and enforcing those rights are kind of important too, I think. So we'll kind of cover all of that through the life cycle as well and through other components of our panel here today. I do want to say, so this presentation and what we're offering today, and I'm sure Steve has a similar perspective, we're not giving legal advice. We'll try to provide as much information we can about a particular situation or question as possible. We'll do our best to kind of tread that line and offer as much information as we can. But if we've got questions that get into legal advice, we can refer you to folks to talk to. You can maybe talk to Steve Moore, Kansas Legal Services, more in a representative capacity or other connections to private counsel throughout the city of Wichita. So please consult an attorney for advice. So, and a lot of this will tie to the eviction resolution program. Again, I work with the city of Wichita. This information is not like speaking on their behalf. I'm not speaking for them right now, but my role is assistant city attorney. I'm trying to provide best information I can from the experience I have as an eviction defense attorney and then working on evictions with the city of Wichita. So what this kind of thing, what I'm going to focus on here is the eviction process in Sedgwick County. It seems if you came here today, my guess was that everybody's going to kind of be from the area. I've seen, I think a few folks maybe at other presentations and programs on similar topics in the past. So that's great as well. Going to really try to focus, but if you have questions about different counties, surrounding areas, kind of what might happen in other courts, please feel free to ask and let us know. This happens in Kansas District Court, so it's, that, that, that's a state court, but it happens at the county level. Every county has a little bit of discretion, a little bit of flexibility to be able to do what they want to do within the bounds of the law. So we'll try to get the rules out there today, explain how it happens in Sedgwick County. And then, you know, give you an idea of broadly what state law is. And if you operate in other places or have lived in other places, plan to, we can talk about that as well. Our goal here too, I will talk a lot about the law, but I, I think of the law and a lot of what I learned, I think at Kansas Legal Services was that the law should hopefully be a means to facilitate a functioning professional relationship between a landlord and tenant. Housing becomes like really personal. There are a lot of legal questions, but it's a very personal thing. We're talking about where people live. We're talking about sources of income from rent that might be essential to someone's livelihood. So these become really, really, I think, personal issues beyond just the legal. But understanding the legal might help us then know what our rights are, know what consequences might be, what benefits come from certain actions and thus facilitate a better relationship between a landlord and a tenant. So I'm going to kind of consider some of these issues through the life cycle of the tenancy. Move in, tenancy, and then our two move out options, hopefully a more positive move out, maybe a more acrimonious eviction process and think through some of those issues. And specifically with the eviction process in Sedgwick County. A couple frameworks to think about these issues. You know, I talk about legal stuff, but maybe you can tell from this presentation already. I'm a big fan of trying to make legal things a bit more practical and functional for folks. So we will talk about legal issues, but a lot of the discussion today will be as practical as possible. So you might have certain legal rights, but it's a big question of how we enforce those rights. And similar for landlords, there might be situations where landlords can take certain actions legally, but it might have very serious consequences for them down the road as well. And I think having a full picture is really important to understanding your rights as a tenant. So our legal framework in Kansas happens within a special statutory framework. By statute, I mean laws at the state level. Landlord tenant statutes can be found as identified here. The main stuff happens in the Residential Landlord Tenant Act, that's 2540, 2573. And then some special procedural sections as well, which will be important. I'll note here, and yeah, please feel free to take pictures, but all of this will be posted as quickly as possible as well. Oh, no, no, please do it. Makes it like, oh, it was like worth putting together. So, no, I greatly appreciate that. I do not want to stop it. But also just for your own sake, it will be available later. So there are some special statutory sections because eviction processes are about the fastest litigation court process that occurs in the state of Kansas. There are special rules for mobile home parks. We're not really going to go into those today. Though if you have questions, please feel free to ask. I will note the main issue, a couple of things. Most of the rules are roughly the same. There is a big complication though, because it's a double tenancy. A lot of times we're not just renting the property or the manufactured home. We're renting the full property, right? The lot underneath as well. So that creates a lot of complications for folks, understanding their rights in both situations and making sure that they just really understand that they have to protect their rights for both of the types of tenancies. This is complemented by local housing and property maintenance codes. I want to note that in Kansas, we've got this thing, like most places, a warranty of habitability. Maybe we've kind of heard a term like that, livability. Basic concept, it's the duty of the landlord to provide a space that is livable or habitable. In Kansas, we try to refer to that with housing codes. So then it's tough, right? Like what is a habitable place? Well, all of us are different and have different ways that we live and things that we would accept or not accept. The way that we tend to refer to this in legal terms is by housing compliance, housing code compliance. If a house is up to code, then it's probably going to be livable or habitable. And you satisfy your duty as a landlord. And Title 20 in our Wichita Code of Ordinances is where you can find that here. Though we've really got the best resource available, so super specific questions or anything coming up in terms of housing code. Heck, I might have some that we asked to kind of, to help my work along as well, while I've got Kalen here today. And then there are some issues addressed by federal fair housing law. Again, not exactly this presentation. I'll mention this maybe a couple of times. Basic concept, don't discriminate throughout the whole life cycle of the tenancy. Application through eviction, treat people the same. And that's what federal fair housing provides. An issue that comes up though is service animals, and that is a part of federal fair housing law. A real quick note on that. Service animals are generally allowed for a tenant under federal fair housing law. Landlords, and unless something's changed, I don't, and there's some attempts at the state level to increase certification requirements, but really, under federal law, any kind of certified service animal qualifies as a service animal. And that includes things like emotional support, assistive things. And even if it's certified, maybe through like an online website where the animal doesn't meet the person kind of doing the certification. Kansas has a law that they're, we're considering in the legislature. And I'm not sure how far it's gone of increasing those certification requirements. So there's a bit more of an imposition. It's questionable whether the state can do that because it's like, is the state more important than the federal government? Usually not legally. So we'll kind of see how that plays out. But just for now, the idea is service animals are protected under federal fair housing law. And the way that plays out is if you have pet restrictions, a landlord has pet restrictions, that animal doesn't count as a pet. If you have a pet deposit requirement, that animal doesn't count as a pet. So it's not a pet so much as a service animal when we've got a situation like that under federal fair housing law. So under these statutes, under these laws, it gives us a few different ways that evictions happen. We've got self-help constructive evictions. Those are unlawful in Kansas. Landlords aren't supposed to do things like lock tenants out, diminish services, cut off water, power, things like that. Non-payment of rent is probably our most familiar one. Those are called three day evictions because it's based on the amount of notice that a landlord needs to provide to a tenant to terminate the tenancy. So if someone's behind on rent, the landlord has to give them a three day notice that if you do not pay in three days, then I'm going to terminate the tenancy. There's a little bit more notice that needs to happen too, that I'll talk about, but that's why we call it a three day eviction. There are 14 30 day evictions as well. Those are all other issues with complying with the lease. And this is more what we think of with non-compliance with the lease. Say there's damage to the property that's caused by the tenant or even the landlord. A tenant has an opportunity to serve a 14 30 day notice as well. It operates roughly the same with some slight differences. But the idea being you give notice that if this issue that is in violation of the lease is not corrected in 14 days, the lease terminates, the tenancy terminates in 30 days. We've got also termination of tenancy, and this is hopefully the happier situation at the end, when someone just moves out. Although sometimes there's stayover as well. And it's, does this become a month to month? Did folks give the proper notice to actually terminate the lease agreement? What are the rights that we have afterward? This is usually settled by the contract, by the lease agreement pretty clearly. And anymore, we usually have, we usually deal with complex lease agreements, not all the time. Our trickiest situations involve things like oral rental agreements where it's not super well spelled out. And then we have to figure out who said what, when, and what actually constitutes the contract. Just general, some information, please write stuff down. Big issues across all these cases will be notice of proceedings. From the landlord's perspective, really notices the big issue. An eviction judge is often going to give possession to the landlord as long as proper notice was followed. And there's actually like non-payment of rent issues. In Kansas, if a landlord does not fix up a property, that's not a reason for, to not pay rent. A tenant can't withhold rent just because a landlord's not complying with the lease. So really the issue a lot of times becomes was notice given, was notice given. And then there are issues such as the amount of damages claimed, such as how harmed was I because the landlord didn't provide water or electricity? But usually a judge will decide that later, not the first time that they decide the trial, at, at trial on who has possession of the property. Those issues get sort of separated. So it's really important to focus on notice issues first and understand what our consequences might be if we're kicked out, even if we've suffered damage as a tenant, even if our rights have been violated too. And so we've got a couple of court appearances then. So we've got these different kinds of eviction cases, but all operate within the same legal sort of framework before the court, our procedure before the court. So there's an initial appearance. Oh, sorry. I was looking at the wrong one to see which one's for you all to turn around sometimes. Our initial appearance, this is what's listed on the summons. So a landlord files a petition to get things going. Says, hey, I'm entitled to possession because the tenant is behind on their rent. I provided notice, that period of time has passed, and now the court, can you please give me possession? That document, once it's filed with the court, is accompanied by a summons. The summons is the official legal document that gives a sheriff or a pro, well, official legal documents. Sorry, I'm jumping ahead a little bit. Official legal document that forces the tenant to be at court. So it's, a petition on its own doesn't cause anybody to physically move. It doesn't change anybody's rights yet. A summons though requires the defendant to be there. And it says there's this initial appearance that you got to be at in Sedgwick County. That's on Wednesdays at 1:30 PM for now. Always check, always check the summons, make sure that's the right time and date. Always read the legal documents very carefully. But for now, those are on Wednesdays at 1:30 and there's an opportunity to call in. I'll have that information in just a little bit. But if the defendant, the tenant doesn't answer, show up at that initial appearance, then it's a default judgment for the landlord. If the tenant shows up disputes the position, there's a trial about a week later. In Sedgwick County, you've got your initial appearance on Wednesday. And then trial usually is the following Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday. So relatively quickly. State law does provide courts up to 14 days to have a trial. Up to 14 days sounds a lot, like a lot compared to maybe the one week in Sedgwick County, but that's super fast compared to basically every other trial setting procedure in the law. Other places around, I'm not sure if Butler still pushes the 14 days all the time. Cali did when I was at Kansas Legal Services. So it's important to kind of understand maybe the court you're working with. And if you've got eviction cases, talk with an attorney who's familiar with that court as well. So these are special limited civil actions, which I just mean to emphasize that things go really quickly. And there's even special procedures within that. So this, this point too is a little bit more broadly, and we've got some folks that provide housing here. And I think a big thing going into an eviction case and thinking about our rights or what our goals are. When we're providing housing, what are we trying to do? We've got a need for income. A lot of times it's maybe really essential to our livelihood. We also want to be a good community steward. We're providing housing for, for people and doing something really important for the community. Are we trying to facilitate governmental assistance? That's been a big part of the conference here, accessing and knowledge about government assistance. And what is our role trying to do that? So what kind of records do we keep? Who do we talk to about the tenancy? Everything we do will be kind of framed by these goals. Are we looking to retain or evict a tenant if you're providing housing? What's the idea here? Can the relationship be salvaged? And this will be an important question for the tenant as well, obviously. Or is it kind of not something that can be figured out? So it would be best for both parties to move on. It might require an eviction, but if we're thinking sort of best of both parties, then maybe we get into the world of settling or mediating things and avoiding some of the worst consequences of eviction. And then our goals as tenant, is this, are we trying to stay here a while? Is this going to be a place we're staying for just a little bit? If so, maybe we can be a little bit more flexible about agreeing to move out. If this is a little more permanent housing though, then we need to think about solidifying our rights a little and maybe like holding a little fast until we can find another place to go. But an eviction has very serious consequences for tenants. And this is beyond just getting kicked out and potentially having your stuff locked up in a place that you cannot access. It goes on your record and it's not just like credit history that you can resolve by better credit, but it's a record that's a public record because it's a court judgment. And there's not a lot that can really be done to unwind a court judgment. There is only one situation I had at Kansas Legal Services that we were able to, and it was a pretty straightforward. The tenant wasn't actually served because they'd moved out already. That's not usually the case. That's not usually the situation. And it's really difficult to tell a judge, hey, I know you signed this judgment. You activated the law. You were wrong though. I wasn't here, but like you were wrong. So that's going to be pretty tough, right? So that stays on our record, that affects our housing availability in the future, what we look like as a tenant. And it does affect credit history at times too, depending on what people are looking at. And then depending on the scope of any kind of background check that you might face, that could be on your record as well. I don't know if it affects things like, you know, employment necessarily. I haven't heard that necessarily being in effect, but it is out there as a public record and stays that way for, really until the records aren't available anymore. And then what is matters beyond the law, establishing that good relationship, making sure if we do need governmental assistance, that we're kind of working with our local agencies and resources, which I'll say, hey, thanks, everybody for being here. Really appreciate that and establishing those kind of connections and getting a better understanding of the resources available. So at move in, I just want to talk about some quick issues that could have big consequences for the rest of the tenancy. What is a rental agreement? Is it just the written agreement? No, it can include oral agreements as well. And if you come to oral agreements with a landlord or a tenant, like we need, that is a contract. It could be a contract amendment, but that's really hard to prove to a court, right? That's why folks think a lot of times oral agreements aren't actually contracts. It's not that it's not a contract, but it's that it's almost impossible to prove to anybody that would decide that it is or not. And so if we have modifications to our tenancy and where we're going to live in our rental agreement, we want to try to write those down and send confirmation to the person that we do that with and keep that for your records as well. But those agreements can't do things like, you know, a landlord can't make a tenant pay for their attorney fees. That's not allowed in Kansas. You'll see maybe that in a lease sometimes because a multi-state property management company might use the same lease state to state. A court would just say, hey, we don't look at that provision. They don't throw the whole lease out or anything like that. Again, fair housing, no, no public, no discrimination in public or private housing. A lot more information is available on our city of Wichita website. So if you'd like more information, I would recommend accessing that. It also has links and resources available for if you're facing a fair housing situation, facing discrimination of folks to contact, or if you have questions about what to do in a situation, resources to reach out to. What we also want to do though at move in, whether you're a landlord, whether you're a tenant, please inventory the premises. And normally for a landlord, that'll be like a checklist. But I would recommend, I, I think really with phones, right? Just take pictures, take video of the property and save it with a date so that you know when it was taken and on your phone, you're the one that did it because you're the one that's going to be talking to the court. The judge wants to know who took the video, when's it from, what is this of? That establishes grounds for admissibility, admitting it into evidence for the court. So it's good to take that evidence yourself. And if you're a tenant, then you've got a great picture of what the property looked like at move in and can resolve any issues of damages later. Security deposits are important too. There's just, this ties a lot, I think, from a tenant side to just making sure we inventory the premises. So if we have as best a chance as possible at getting the security deposit back. From a landlord perspective though, same sort of thing, right? Security deposit issues usually come about because there's a question about who caused what damage and a tenant can't go into the property anymore. So there's no real way to resolve the dispute, right? But if we've got better evidence, maybe we can resolve it even short of a court case. The tenancy itself, we want to maintain that relationship. Some areas to consider that we talked about a lot already include habitability. So what landlord duties are. And in general, they're, they're spelled out in statute, but it's kind of what we think, right? Provide access to water. They don't have to pay the water bill, but provide access to water service, electrical service, things like that. Traditionally landlords are supposed to provide appliances and other things, but that can all be settled by the agreement for the most part. Along, as long as both parties kind of understand what they're contracting to and aren't doing things like paying for attorney's fees. You can kind of do whatever you want in the lease agreement that makes sense for the contracting parties. Landlords can establish rules as well, obviously, but those should be in the lease agreement. A part of the lease agreement are incorporated. Or if you're adding new rules, if new rules are added, notice needs to be given to everybody. Pretty straightforward stuff. Landlords do have a right to enter the property under state law that is with reasonable notice at a reasonable time. What's that mean? I don't know. Courts generally kind of say with 24 hours notice and during business hours. So reasonable is tough. It allows room though for things like emergencies. What if a landlord really does need to get in because a tenant's there and there's a gas leak? Or I guess they wouldn't go in, but something a little less significant than that even. But emergency where they need to get into the property, that, that's allowed, right? A landlord still owns the property, so they have rights in the property, but they can't just go in and interfere with a tenant's life. If a tenant does stop a landlord from going in after giving reasonable notice though, a tenant is liable for damages. A landlord could maybe claim that in the eviction case. It's kind of hard to prove what the damages are though. I haven't seen that succeed really ever. But just something to be aware of, potential liabilities. And a tenant, when you're there, really the idea maybe return the property is he got it, right? Pretty straightforward idea. And then throughout having it, let's not cause any damage more than normal wear and tear. Anything beyond that is probably going to be susceptible to damages unless you fix it before you leave the property. And then you things like maintenance too. It's like you can require a landlord or require. It's like how you are able to enforce this is a big thing that Steve's going to talk about for sure. But legally, say a landlord is obligated to make repairs. You know, you could try to collect those damages later or try to set it up under the lease. Hopefully there's a provision where you get a deduction on your rent, things like that. So let's check our lease agreement to make sure we have a good understanding of who does what maintenance. And if we have questions, try to resolve those before we sign the lease. And that usually is kind of, that's a big question that comes up a lot during the tenancy. It's who is supposed to repair something and how do we make them do it? Short of calling our code folks, you know? So eviction's more memorable, but hopefully it's mostly without legal challenge. But we want to be aware of some potential issues, even when someone moves out in a slightly happier sort of way. We want to do a move out inventory, both as a tenant and a landlord, exact same style. Honestly, you want your evidence to match up. So it's really easy to tell what was there at the beginning, what was there at the end? Take our pictures, take our video, have dates, have it saved. Security deposit disposition, a little bigger issue from the landlord side, honestly. Because there are some specific rules where if a landlord does not send you an itemized list of all of the money that they're keeping and the reasons why, then a tenant can claim that their security deposit was wrongfully withheld and get one and a half times the amount of money that was wrongfully withheld. Again, we need to bring a lawsuit. There are complications to that and everything. Are we already in an eviction case? But that is something more landlords need to be aware of. And I will say from the tenant's side though, the statute says your last known address, that's where the landlord needs to send the notice. Something we would see a lot though, is the tenant will move out and not give the landlord the new address. So a landlord will send the letter, the notice to the place that the tenant just moved out, right? And maybe they haven't set up with the post office forwarding service yet. So the landlord satisfied their obligations, but nobody got the letter. And now that's going to be easily resolved, right? Like that's probably going to take a court to kind of like separate folks because both people kind of think they're right about that situation in a way that we can't really prove without an objective decision maker. Also, an issue will be kind of personal property left behind tenants. Please, whenever we're facing a risk of eviction and you've got eviction court coming up, move out everything that matters to you. And I know that's dire. I know that sounds super serious, but you can be evicted the day of eviction court. The sheriff, if they've got a good setup, but usually more of a process server can be at your door later that day after the judge makes the decision. So you really need to be prepared for having all of your stuff available. And once you're locked out, a landlord doesn't need to let you back in unless you pay them back all of the money that is owed. And then there's storage fees that you can charge, you can be charged for that. The landlord can sell or dispose of the property. And that's kind of the trickier part for the landlord on this side too, that I want to emphasize. A landlord can't really sell or even throw away that property though, without publishing notice in an official newspaper like county record. Like Derby is a decent setup, but like the Wichita Eagle, things like that. And then sending that notice to the tenant and then waiting a few days and then selling the property. So there's some specific rules and costs to even sell some personal property that probably isn't worth a whole lot to anybody but the tenant for the most part. So things like taking control of someone's property as a landlord in this situation might be legally correct. You have the right to do it, but it kind of might be stepping into a hornet's nest a little bit financially. And then in terms of like holding on to the property, storing it and all that sort of stuff too. So that's kind of important to think about. And maybe a place then where it's really good for landlords and tenants, even during a tough eviction, to maybe set aside other differences and figure out a plan to get stuff out of the property. Also tenants might abandon the property. That's all decided by state law. So if you've got a question, maybe reach out to someone for some legal advice. Usually it's like if you're gone for 30 days or if someone's or if someone's gone for 10 days and they're behind on rent, it's super clear they're not there, then it's abandoned and a uh, landlord can terminate the tenancy, but you still got to try to re-rent the property as soon as possible. You can't be like, oh, the tenant left, I'm just going to keep charge of them. There is an obligation to try to re-rent the property and make some good faith efforts to do that. Okay, so eviction, um, that's kind of what we're going to focus on for the rest of this, understand the rules there. Always talk with an attorney as best we can if you're facing an eviction lawsuit. Um, we can cover some of the ground, though, here, types of evictions that we talked about before, then procedure, notice details, and the legal document writ of restitution. That is the one that says that you physically cannot be in the property anymore if you're the tenant. It gives the sheriff or the process server the power to physically remove you from the property as a tenant. So types of evictions, we talked about these before. Self-help, non-payment of rent, material non-compliance or termination of tenancy. But we refer to those middle ones as three-day or 14, 30-day uh, evictions usually. We got our common issues that we talked about quite a bit. Um, one thing to emphasize at the bottom here, though, eviction cannot occur without a court order. A lot of times tenants will receive a document that they think means they have to be out. Whether that's the three-day notice that says you need to leave the premises, it seems like you need to leave the premises. That's not a court order, though. You need a document from the court to actually force off someone off the property, and that's important from the landlord's side too. Even if you filed your petition, even if you've got a judgment from the court that you are entitled to possession, you don't have something that says you can kick that person off of the property and lock them out. That is the last piece that activates more of the, the physical force side of the law, the enforcement, physical enforcement side of the law. But that court order is important from the tenant's side to understand how long you have to be there and what your rights are at a given point. And from a landlord's side to avoid forcing someone out when you did not have the legal right to do so yet. Notice is really important, though. Evictions in Kansas start with proper notice and just about everywhere. Two types of notice. We talked about the notice needed to terminate the tenancy. That's if you're behind on rent three days. If there's another issue, 14, 30 days. Um, but you also need to combine that with a document if you're a landlord that says the tenant has to leave the premises. So the lease is terminated and the, you have to leave the premises. And really, that's alwa- almost always the same document. I think you'll see a combined document on the Kansas Judicial Council website as well. But that, I, I mean, that's important. That doesn't always happen. And notice is a really, really crucial thing for the eviction process. So the notice to leave the premises must be at least three days before the eviction is filed. And this is the document that says, hey, if you're not off of the property, I'm going to file an eviction court case. And that's why this document is separately needed. It provides notice of a court case, not just that the tenancy is over, but that a court case is coming if they don't leave the premises. And then really, though, because it's combined all the time, the bigger issue is getting your dates right for the other notices as a landlord. Three-day notice, 14, 30-day notice, or when the tenancy is over, whatever the lease says. 30 days, sometimes 60 days. Make sure we read our lease to see how much notice to provide. And then from the, from the perspective of the, of the tenant, making sure that they gave you the right notice and that the days match up. Because if they don't, then a landlord needs to start over and do the process again. Um, and which doesn't necessarily take the longest amount of time, but is important maybe if you need a little longer to relocate or to potentially settle. Hey, you've got a problem with this lawsuit instead of with doing it all again and paying an attorney to file some papers, let's settle to move out in a couple of weeks, something like that. So again, understanding rights from both sides maybe gives us a better idea of how to um, figure out how to move out and protect ourselves. So the landlord gives notice, again, that's the notice. Um, to terminate the lease and the notice to leave, they file a petition in court after that notice period has passed. You can't be like, hey, I filed a three-day notice, waited one day, filed my petition. They didn't fi- no, they didn't do anything after three days. They didn't pay me anyway, so I can keep with my case, right? No, you have to wait until the three days has passed to file the petition. You can't just have the clock running in the middle of starting your case. Um, consult with an attorney on questions. These forms, though, are available on the Kansas Judicial Council website. I have that here. This presentation will be posted. It's available on the eviction resolution program website as well, um, which Abigail has put together. Um, that has a lot of the documents that you'll need. Kansas Legal Services also has a nice collection of forms and documents as well. In Sedgwick County, print out, fill out these forms, bring them to the courthouse on the 11th floor, file them in person. That's the easiest way to do it. So at the tenant will receive that summons. We have that initial appearance, answer hearing I talked about before. Wednesday is 1:30 at Sedgwick County, uh, usual district court, usually on the first floor. The district court's the blue building uh, down the street across the street from City Hall. Um, so like central and main. Um, so there's also an option, though, to call in dispute. So if you can't make it to court, you can also call in before that time. And this is important, I think, for a landlord's side too, because the court is not, does not always say when that happens. Um, so it's important to maybe check in to see whether a, a tenant did dispute the petition or not, instead of assuming one way or the other. And you can use that number. Um, so what we have in pre-trial, a tenant appears in person, maybe their attorney, you can file an answer. But usually eviction cases happen so quickly, you don't have to file an answer. But it's really good too, because it lays out for yourself and the court what your defenses are going to be and to the landlord. So maybe everybody understands better what's going on from everybody's perspective. And when that happens, maybe we can mediate and settle. Um, if the tenant shows up, then we have a trial at that initial, after that initial appearance, we have the trial. It can be 14 days. Sedgwick County is usually the following week. Um, you can file the written answer. This is what I was talking about. You can even have a counterclaim saying, as a tenant, my rights were violated as well. I suffered damage as well. And you want to include that in this case because you've got the court there. But just to be upfront about it, the judge is not going to decide that first. The judge is going to decide that issue later because the more pressing issue under the law is who has possession of the property. And again, even if a tenant's rights have been violated, a landlord can still evict, right? You cannot like, uh, violations of a warranty of habitability are not a defense to eviction, as we say legally. Um, so it's important to include your counterclaims, but also understand that eviction can still happen. Um, and if a tenant doesn't respond, though, then the landlord just wins through default judgment. And then, like I mentioned, in Sedgwick County, usually the, the following week, you can't continue cases. Um, be as a tenant, usually because you have to pay the amount of money that you owe. So trial's going to occur when it occurs. Um, Monday, Tuesday or Wednesday, most often 9:00 AM on the 11th floor, the Sedgwick County District Courthouse. Subject to change in the future, though, so always please check our legal documents. We have a chance to negotiate now before a hearing with the judge through the eviction resolution program. Well, not necessarily through them, but they uh, direct folks to mediate and kind of help establish maybe an opportunity uh, to do that, that was not there before and provide people information. And this will be based upon an evidentiary review. So if we think we're right about anything, we need to have evidence for the judge. A judge is not going to just decide, even if you have a witness, if a witness does not have much additional objective evidence, it's going to be really difficult to decide things as a judge. Take pictures, write things down, send written confirmations, keep it as a file. All that sort of stuff will make your life a whole lot easier. An eviction can be ordered that same day, so we need to be really prepared. Um, even if we've suffered some damages, we need to be prepared to face eviction if we're a tenant in eviction court that day. I do want to emphasize some informal options. I've talked about always an option to settle the case. I mean, that's good from a landlord's side because usually you don't have to pay us attorneys as much. From a defense side, from the tenant's side, you don't have as many consequences that you might be facing. Uh, some websites here to um, access information through the eviction resolution program. Um, and then their uh, website email address, all that sort of stuff too. So after court, if a landlord prevails, that's when they get possession. This is the information I was talking about before, where a landlord gets a judgment from the court, but they also have to get a writ of restitution. The document that says the su- process server or the sheriff can force the other person out. Um, other issues are decided later, but personal property concerns, that's a really big thing to think about as a landlord and a tenant. If the tenant prevails, though, we go back to the way things basically were before. Unless the judge is like, hey, you will need to act a bit better. I'm going to direct you to do so, which does happen sometimes. Um, after court for tenants, this is just kind of the last real big thing I want to emphasize. Again, this goes on record. I talked about this a lot before, but your eviction, an eviction does go into public record that's available for most backgrounds searches, it seems like. Um, there's not much you can do afterward. Limited remedies are available. So just avoid that as best we can and really try to settle, move our stuff out as really as best I'm. It's really rough to say when people are facing difficult situations. I know that's not always like an option really practically, but at the same time, eviction is the same thing and then carries additional consequences. So that's really important, I think, for folks to think through. Then we talked about issues of damages. We might do that at a later date because it takes more evidence and the court has a lot of people um, to see during eviction court days. Here's um, the resources, like really please visit that eviction resolution program website. Wonderful collection, community resources, connections to city websites, state websites, judicial council, all that sort of stuff. Abigail's, you've done a great job. She's got some forms available too that are printed out here if you'd like to take them. But all of that stuff is also available. I think this presentation is roughly available there too. If you'd like to kind of review anything um, on video, um, so all, all of that is there as well. Um, so I'll skip that questions part unless anybody has some now and then kind of uh, I'll just leave this up, I suppose. Transition more to, I think, Mr. Steve.
Sure.
So tell me how to make any of this actually work from a tenant's side. And thank you so much, everybody. Oh, yeah.
What is your question for? I believe.
Oh, yeah, sure.
I did have a couple of quick questions as you were going through there and I wanted to get them real quick. Service animals, they're not part of the uh, uh, deposit and stuff of nature. I, I get it. Everybody now is getting service animals in here.
Right. That's, yeah, that's the rub.
Service animal don't know that, that uh, you can't scratch it up or tear up nothing.
Sure. Sure.
And those damages come, so how, how that?
That's, that's honestly, I think, the, the finest line in this. Because under fair housing laws, say someone has a disability that you need to accommodate, such as a reeling or a ramp. Those things, that's pretty well spelled out. You've got to provide that, but it can be incorporated into the cost of the rental, more or less. But that's a little different here because we also, you have pets all the time. So pets are a bit more of a normal thing at the property anyway, and the fair, I don't read the guidance to say things like you can charge more for damage to the property. But if a service animal does destroy the property that you have to clean beyond what is normal of wear and tear, I think that generally is something that landlords do and can claim damages for, even if it was a service animal. And I may be wrong on that conclusion, but I think you have to allow the animal there. You can't pay a deposit, but if there's a ton of damage to the property afterward, that's still something that person is liable for, even while having the service animal there. But.
How, how long is same line, but either one of you guys?
Okay, I'm sorry to keep talking.
Handicap. So you got a person there who needs uh, wheelchair accessibility, your advertising place in here, but your place is not handicap. Rent, you know, you don't have those, those facilities. And the door too narrow, it can't get his wheelchair in there and this stuff in here, uh, but he apply, he wants to apply. And so you ask him, you know, there's any, can you ask him if there's any handicap, you know, restrictions that you have? Are you required uh, to make these modifications? And if you have to require, does that cost go to the tenant? I, I think you said something in there. Well, I don't know.
I have only had one or two cases in five years where I've heard a dispute about making modifications to the apartment, one that I can think of and the, and the, it was professionally managed place. The woman became handicapped after she had rented and she needed lower counters, I think, or some, something very, and they, they did it. And, and they didn't charge her for it. And I don't, I don't know what the, I don't know what the law is on that. And you could, I, I'd have you check with the Kansas Disability Rights Center.
I mean, that. Yeah, it sounds a little bit discriminatory. So hey, well, you know, I got steps. I don't have a ramp.
Well, and I, that, and I think generally how it's going to operate, please ask someone specifically, but it's going to operate like you need to provide accommodations or be open to providing accommodations, but those additional costs can be borne by the tenant. So in this situation, it seems like they came to an agreement. She lived there a while. Um, but I, I don't think, I, I think the guidance legally, you, as described in the fair housing guidance, is that those costs can be put on the tenant. Now, it can't be excessive, you know, it can't be discriminatory costs, basically. But if it accurately reflects the accommodations that you were forced to make legally, but also like wanted to, if you worked with that person, stuff like that, you know? If you're, the law requires accommodations, but not necessarily for the landlord to bear the cost of those. Um, but please consult with someone specifically about the situation because that is, that it's a very specific area of law. And then that line becomes, what's discriminatory, but versus what's a reasonable cost, I think, will become real specific, case specific too.
That's the guy at the legal service. He can tell me that.
I, well, I, I'm not an expert in that. I, I think you're going to, uh, and you're, you're a landlord?
Yeah, because you know, I, you know, there's good tenants and you want to make it a common one. And, and more and more of these situations are coming up, pets and handicapping and discrimination. And so even though you may have a good tenant that has a good record and they have, you know, history and uh, where he's been and stuff in here and credit and all of this stuff, you say, well, you make a great tenant. But I love to have you, but I, I'm just not, I have to deny it because I'm not handicap accessible in what you're needing.
Yeah, and that denial, I think, will risk some potential consequences for you if you don't first make the opportunity available to accommodate. Check though with Kansas Disability Rights Center.
I, I don't have a problem making it accountable, but I'm not going to bear the whole cost.
And that, well, you know, and that's, and that's how the law is set up. I, I think it's like, I think that's why the law is set up generally that way. But there will be like specific issues in your situation where I, I think you want to consult or even like try to touch base with the folks who like enforce fair housing laws. At Kansas level, those resources are available on the website, like those kind of connections. I mean, Kansas Disability Rights Center would probably be the best folks to contact about this issue.
Or landlord lawyer.
And yeah, private counsel is available as well in town uh, for landlord, right? Okay, all right. Or property management. Yeah, I mean, there's usually private counsel more available for folks who rent the property, like who are property managers or landlords, rather than uh, attorneys available for tenants, just for the most part. But there, we can provide references afterward too, or when you're leaving, I can stop by, make sure you got some people to connect with.
Okay, because you might have to leave here.
All right, let's go chat really quick.
Yeah. And how many tenants do we have in the audience? Okay. Uh, most of what I deal with at Kansas legal services, low-income folks on the tenant's side, although we get, uh, we have uh, landlords call us from time to time also. But the, the focus of my practice is, is defending tenants or, or giving advice to tenants who are facing problems with their lease. And, and I, I guess I organized this talk as sort of one of the main questions I get on the phone because and our process for intake is, uh, you can call, we have an 800 number, we have a sign up on the website number, we have an access to justice telephone number. Uh, we have, there's a self-help center at the Wichita uh, Bar Association Law Library where we have folks on Wednesdays. Um, but usually there's some sort of screening to find out what the problem is and to get it to the right attorney. That doesn't help that happen at the self-help center, but if you call us or apply on the website, if it's a landlord tenant question and, and in the Sedgwick County, for example, in Wichita, it'll, it'll end up probably getting to me. And um, I probably get on average of three or four landlord tenant questions a day. So it'll come to me with a little background, where you live, name, and that sort of thing, and a, a brief summary of the problem. And one of the most common problems is, we're talking about tenant rights is, well, what rights do tenants have? And, and Nate was giving you an overview of, of some of this. And one of the most basic ones is, is you have a right to a habitable premises that you're paying for. And even if the lease doesn't say so, there, your premise, your, the partner of the home you're renting is supposed to comply with a um, if it's in Wichita, the city Wichita Housing Codes that, that are at least those that are uh, affect your health and safety. A smoke detectors, windows that open, if there's a furnace and, and it's winter time, the furnace needs to work. The, I don't think a, an air conditioner is required, but if, if the, if the, if the department comes with an air conditioner, it needs to work.
That's right.
And uh, uh, and sometimes, you know, I've had a case where uh, it's the hottest days of the year and the, the air conditioner goes out and the landlord's not fixing it and not really seeming to take any significant steps toward getting it fixed. So that's a habitability problem. That's also a breach of the Kansas Landlord Tenant Act. So there's, there's a special section of the Kansas Landlord Tenant Act, which talks about the landlord's duties. And Nate touched on that briefly. It's compliant with housing codes, uh, reasonable care and maintaining the common areas, because if you're living in an apartment complex, you've got the common areas. I had a, I had a big fight one- I had a, I had a big fight once with a tenant that got involved in, where a new management had come in. And to save money, they got rid of half the, uh, uh, trash dumpsters. And when you do that, you get trash all over the apartment complex. It piles up, comes outside, people are throwing diapers everywhere. And, and that, that was an issue. Um, they've gotta maintain the electrical, the plumbing, the heating, ventilation. And I get a lot of pro, uh, uh, plumbing problems. Where uh, upstairs, you know, it's leaking, somebody's flushing the toilet, it's coming through, you know? Uh, the, there's raw sewage in the dishwasher. What do I do about that? Because the landlord's not fixing it. That's a problem. And uh, uh, and with first, when someone's paying their mon, you're, they're paying the rent every month. And they're expecting the landlord to make repairs and their repairs aren't getting made. And running water and hot water. And I had a, I had a tenant the other day that the landlord got the wa, he was responsible for the bill. The water got shut off, so the landlord went out there and cut the lock on the water main. And the city found out about it. And so the city comes out and removes the water meter, so there is no water at that place. And that's a problem. So uh, we have people that are kind of desperate and don't know what to do and are paying rent. And what, what can I do? Right? So number one, uh, well, I back up and say there's not a lot of great options for a tenant. And this is kind of like grandpa's advice that. If you've got a contract with somebody, that contract's as good as a person on the other side. And landlords know that too, that the contract's as good as the tenant. And it's as good, I mean, if, and most of the time, things work well. Professionally managed place, or it's a, it's a small landlord who's doing what they need to do and the tenant's paying rent and everybody, you know. Maybe there's a slight delay in getting something repaired because of, you know, for some reason, but there are situations out there. And there are landlords out there that will not make repairs and uh. Or it's very, very difficult to get them to make repairs. So what are you gonna do? If you're a tenant. Well, the first thing you can do is aim, you know, it's served what's called a fourteen thirty day notice. Which says make these repairs in fourteen days and list them out. It's gotta be in writing, it's not notarized, it's not a court document. It could be in pencil on notebook paper. And I take a photo of it and get it to the landlord. Saying my lease is up in thirty days. On the next rent paying date, if you haven't made these repairs in fourteen days. And all it really takes is the landlord to have undertaken a good faith effort to begin the repairs. That's not really great for a tenant, especially if it's, you know, a hundred degrees out and your air conditioner is not working. And the, the windows won't open. And that's almost impossible survive that. I've seen a woman do that with two kids in the apartment. It's brutal. And the advice basically is to move out and sue your landlord, but moving out, it's not. It, it's hard, you know, you've got two preschool kids and no money. It's easy for lawyers to say, well, go ahead and move out, but just don't even worry about the fourteen thirty, just move out. That's. If they, you know, that's very difficult to do. But that's one thing that can be done, and I've seen tenants do it before and I've helped them draft up a fourteen thirty nor, a notice and then move out. Well, what else could be done? Well, you can sue the landlord. There's a statutory provision that says that the landlord's breaching his duties under. Uh, under the statute or under the lease. You can file a lawsuit for damages and for injunctive relief, which says uh, an injunctive relief is a court order. That tells the landlord to make the repairs. That's, that's, that's nice, but it's also extremely difficult to do without a lawyer. It, it just is. I mean, you, uh, you can probably the um. The easiest thing to do is sue the landlord for damages in small claims court. Small claims court's made for people that don't have lawyers. And in fact, if you sue your landlord in small claims court. Uh, he doesn't, or she doesn't get a lawyer in small claims, right? It's just you, two, and the judge in small claims. The maximum amount you can ask for is four thousand dollars. You can also make the repairs yourself. And then you've got a bill that you pay. And then you can sue the landlord in small claims court. And the bill is the proof. You got your lease, you got your bill. And you can try to collect that money. What I, what I have a lot of people get into uh, trouble for is withholding rent. They just like, I've been, I've been holding up my end of the bargain, the landlord's not holding up his end of the bargain, so I'm just not gonna pay. And that gets you evicted every time in Kansas. That, and the landlords know it. And they'll file and, and you can say, but I, you know, I didn't, I had no heat and it was winter time. And it's like, that's not, that's actually saving from eviction. Another thing you could do is call the neighborhood housing inspectors. And you gotta be careful there. And because uh, landlords don't like it. Housing inspectors. And, and I get, you know, the, one of the concerns, and it's a real concern. Is that the landlord's gonna dislike it so much, because of what will happen is there's some good inspectors out there. They'll come out and they'll see if it. Complies to the city Wichita Housing Code. And when uh, every time it rains outside, it rains in your house. It doesn't comply with the city Wichita Housing Code. So that's a no brainer. No furnace in the winter, that doesn't comply. Windows painted shut so you can't escape, that doesn't comply. Uh, foundations crack and mice are getting in, uh, no, you know, and there are. Uh, really horrific conditions out there that surprised me. I didn't do this kind of work until five years ago and I couldn't believe some of the photos I saw. But uh, and conditions I've seen. So you can call the neighborhood housing inspectors and, and Kaylin can talk about this, but. Uh, the, the process, but they'll get written up, notice violation, and landlords will get some time to make repairs. Depending on how serious and how threatening to life and safety the, the, the needed repair is. And there's a statute out there that's made that says you can't retaliate against a tenant. For complaining to this, the housing inspectors. You can't evict them. That doesn't stop landlords from trying. And a lot of them get, you know, can get, you know, can do it. And they'll, they'll try and they'll, they'll say, well, I'm not evicting them because they called the city housing inspectors. I'm evicting them because. Of whatever. And sometimes it's like, I have one now, it's like, well, she, that tenant prevented me from coming into the house to make the repairs. And there's, there's a factual to speed on that. Or I just gave my thirty day notice for month-to-month tenants anyway, and I just want them out. Uh, maybe I need them out to make repairs. And, but there's no one. Out there that's going to check and see if it's a retaliatory eviction unless the tenant raises that as a defense to an eviction action. And I don't like the thought of a tenant going to eviction court to defend. Anytime, because the risk is so great for the tenant. For the landlord, the risk is they pay a, a landlord lawyer a, a couple, three hundred bucks to file the action. And if they lose, they're still gonna get paid. If the tenant loses, they can be out. This, I've, I've seen it once where it was the same day. And uh, usually it's as soon as the next day. And it's um. It's a brutal process and there's sort of so much risk on the tenant. And I've had a housing inspector, I had a, I had a uh, someone I talked to on the phone. When we talked about calling the housing event inspectors, that person had already called inspector. And the neighborhood inspector called them before they came out and said, are you sure you really wanna do this? Because you gotta be ready for an eviction that's coming. And that person didn't do it, and they're looking at what else can I do? It's moving, you know, move out basically with a fourteen thirty. And that's not what the tenant wants. They're paying the money for an apartment that is functional, that's habitable. Uh, but sometimes that's the only good option. Uh, moving out and then suing the landlords in small claims is, I, I like that. I know that, that's better than suing your landlord when you're still living there, in my view. Because suing your landlord when you're there, especially if you're a month-to-month tenant, is just asking for. You're gonna be moving to an apartment soon. But uh, those are, those are the, basically the three things. A fourteen thirty day notice. That says you're gonna be moving out if the repairs aren't made. That's slow and the landlord just has to show a good faith effort undertaken. Uh, suing the landlord for damages and injunctive relief, and it's almost impossible for a tenant without a lawyer to sue for injunctive relief. And you can't hire a lawyer to do this. It's almost impossible unless your uncle or aunt or friend is a lawyer. Or, or Kansas Legal Service that can help you. It's, you're not gonna be able to do that. Practicing. You can sue for damages in small claims court. Or you can see if, but the, you can see if the city can help you out. And the city does help out from time to time. I mean, and my, my folks, and it, uh, uh, they'll always come out, they'll always inspect. And sometimes it works out well and sometimes it doesn't work out well. So it's, those aren't great options for the tenant, but those seem to be it. Not paying is not an option. In some states, you can make the repair yourself, provide a copy of the bill and deduct it from the. Next month's rent check. Can't do that in Kansas. Right? You gotta fill in the small one. So that's one of my most frequently asked questions and a source of enormous frustration is when. Repairs are not getting made. And, you know, I had a guy where he moved his bed to every. Part of the bedroom trying to escape the drips coming from the ceiling that rain. And he, and he couldn't, there's nowhere he could move his bed where it didn't rain on his bed. And he asked the landlord, hey, how about just get me to a different apartment? And they wouldn't let him go. Well, how about let me out my lease? No, and he, he didn't know what about fourteen thirty was. And they wouldn't let him out of his lease. And so he was, you know, eventually his daughter got onto us and the landlord got a lawsuit. And it worked out better for him. And we got him enough to buy him a new bed. And I think some new pillows that had been, and a little bit extra for punitive damages when we found out uh, through discovery. Uh, in the legal process that the landlord's own internal records had said this apartment is not to be rented because it's so moldy and. It rains, we can't stop the leak. And I've only got that without some punitive damages. That's, that's fairly rare. So what, what else? Uh, what other kinds of questions do we get? One is a panic question. Uh, my landlord says he's evicting me on Friday, what do I do? And so the, and, and this is back to where Nate was saying, well, what kind of eviction is it? Is it a, is it an on payment? Did you get a three day notice? Or is it a fourteen thirty? Uh, or is it, uh, you've overstayed your lease? You know, what, what kind of eviction? And we do have some landlords that will try what are called self-help evictions. I think Nate and I had a case where the landlord came at night. Opened the front door, the, the, there was a family in there and the landlord took the front door off the hinges, cleared his truck and drove off. And this, this family had children in the home and it was not a great neighborhood and they had no more front door. And that's a self-help eviction. Or, or we've, there's other cases where landlords have nailed that were shut, shut off water, shut off electricity. Um, I had, I had a guy whose landlord shut off electricity in the hottest, you know, it was like August, a couple of years ago, really hot. And he had a big chest freeze or lost all his food, lost air, you know, so uh, those, those. Subject the landlord to actual damages, meaning you're out pocket losses or one and a half times the rent, which is not a lot. But self-help eviction, evictions, changing the locks, et cetera, are illegal. So though you have a right to court process for your, to be evicted. And Nate talked about the, the three day notices. I got people that say. Uh, uh, this isn't even a court document, it's not notarized, so it's not real. I'm not gonna pay any attention to it. That's a bad idea. It just has to be in writing, it could be in crayon on big sheet, you know, writing tablets. I think it could probably be a text message.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, or an email that says, you know, pay up or get out. And eventually if you don't, so if you don't pay and you don't get out. The landlord has the right to sue you. And that three day notice is jurisdictional, meaning they don't get to have the lawsuit without it. And it is a defense. But it's a defense that a lot of tenants will use and say, I never got a three day notice. And the judge hears that a lot and I don't think it's very successful. So one of the things that some landlords are starting to do, which I like, is they'll take three day notice to the door and they'll step back and take a cell phone. A photo of it, and then you did get the three day notice. So uh. If, if you pay during the three days, the landlord has to accept it. I have had some landlords say, well, I'm not gonna take it. I'm evicting you. That, that's illegal. If it's after the three days and you try to pay, I would be very careful because the landlord can accept the rent. Saying, well, you know, especially in writing, I'm still reserving my right to evict you, you owe me this rent anyway, and then proceed with the eviction. So those are three day evictions. And there's the, the fourteen thirty, the material non-compliance evictions that Nate was talking about. Uh, if you correct, they gave, they gave you a fourteen thirty, say, correct the problem of fourteen days, your lease is up in thirty days. You're parking the truck on the front lawn. I don't like that. And, and the city's getting me in trouble. You've got a nuisance and the city's after me. Correct the problem. You broke the window or your kid did fix the window in fourteen days. Where your lease is up in thirty days. And if there's a second violation, they don't have to give you a fourteen thirty. You have to skip the thirty days. Say you corrected the problem, but then you start parking the truck on the lawn again and uh, the landlord can just say thirty days and you're out. But it, oh, if you don't, it takes a lawsuit to get you out. You have the right to go to court and say, this was not a material lease violation. Uh, the grass never got that long, right? The landlord's gave me a fourteen thirty for having grass that's too long. I've got photos. You know, I mowed the grass and it never got long again. And again, that's going to court and defending and the risk is on you because that eviction can. You're gonna go to trial, you're probably not gonna have a lawyer. And if you lose. They can have you out almost. The, the lawyers in Wichita, the eviction lawyers, general use process servers. Those are not, it's not the sheriff, those are private guys who will show up at your house and put you out. And uh, the next day usually. And that's, that's a, that's an enormous amount of risk. So. On, on trial procedure, the landlord can also sue you for damages. Doesn't have to. It's, it's very common in Wichita not to sue for damages. It's cheaper to file that lawsuit. And then they reserve their damages for later. Uh, and they, it's fairly common to see a lawsuit later, especially if the, the amount of back rent was large. And there's damage to the house. Sometimes you meet, if you've been sued. For eviction, you, and you have a claim against the landlord, the, the, you know, the moldy walls, caving in ceilings. And you wanna bring a claim for breach of warranty, habitability and breach of lease, you better bring it in this lawsuit or it may be barred, it may be too late. And that's not a million dollar claim. It's not a hundred, I mean, it's uh, it may be a. Ten thousand dollar ca, claim. The largest one I've seen or that I've dealt with was. A landlord who uh, refused to do maintenance on the sewer system. And the tree roots would get into the uh, sewer. And it was a new landlord from Oklahoma who bought a, 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 a property and he didn't like to do maintenance. And they told the property manager, it's like, hey, you gotta, you know, the roger woozer guy comes out every year, you know, like, and it's backing up. And it backed up a couple of times, a little bit of sewage under the front door because they're in kind of a basement apartment. And they wouldn't do it. And then, you know, uh, eventually there was a big uh, problem where they woke up with. A raw sewage over the shoes in the basement apartment and it, it trashed everything. And that was like a nineteen thousand dollar judgment against the landlord that we got, that included some punitive damage. Uh, but I know, so breach of warranty, habitability, ask for some of your rent money back, ask for fifty percent. You know, if you didn't have air conditioning for August, you, I think you're probably entitled to more than that. But these are not really high dollar cases. Uh, unless you can get some punitive damages. And you may need to bring those. Well, what defenses do you have if you get sued for eviction? One is you didn't get the notice. That is, and a, a defense that the judge hears all the time, I never, I never got it. And. They're probably gonna have somebody from the landlord that's gonna say, yeah, I stuck it on their door. Hopefully they'll have a photo of it if they're gonna, I mean. And I've seen, uh, I've seen, and this is a prior evictions judge, make a credibility determination. Explain to the, both the landlord or the property manager and the tenant, I've gotta decide who I believe and I believe the tenant. And, and I believe the tenant too, that she never got it, that I didn't believe the property manager. And sometimes, you know, they just don't wanna serve the three day, they just went ahead and sued. But that's probably not gonna work. Sometimes they'll give you a three day notice and then sue you the next day. And that's, that's the, that's a lawsuit without jurisdiction should be dismissed. If you lose and, uh, you, just a moment about what happens at trial. Because if you get sued by a particular eviction's uh, lawyer, trial's on Monday. Another eviction lawyer's trial on Tuesday and a third on Wednesday. And there could be thirty defendants in the courtroom and, and then property managers. It could be a full courtroom. And the eviction lawyer will come in, pull out a stack of paper and start calling people back usually to a. Um, hallway or to a little room by the judge's office to nego, try to negotiate an agreement. And there's not much negotiating usually, it's more of a, here, sign this judgment against yourself. You really don't have defense. If you sign it, I'll give you another couple of days to move out. If you, if you don't sign it, you take me to trial, I'll have you out here tomorrow. And it can be very intimidating if you're unrepresented. And a lot of people sign judgments against themselves. And don't even get a deal that they get a couple. And a lot of people sign judgments against themselves and don't even get a deal that they get a couple of extra days. And that's, you know, that's uh very, you know, I'm happy to call me on the way out of the courthouse. And I've told them, don't sign a ju- don't sign a judgment against yourself. And the answer is, well, they told me I didn't have a choice and, you know, I I signed it. What do I do now? And it's like, that's a bad, that's a bad situation. And when the process servers come to put you out, you know, it's usually the next day and it's usually you got five minutes to pack a bag. And there's no messing around. They're not gonna negotiate with you. And um I've had people scrambling to try to get their pets, right? The dogs uh run and uh the kids this and they're, you know, their school bags and the kids are there and it's terrible. And I would not have the kids in the house when the processor, you know, when armed men come to remove you from the house, do not have your children there because they'll never forget it. And uh be prepared. I'd get everything, but I wouldn't go to court without having my, you know, person important papers, jewelry, electronics in the car trunk. If you can get them in the car trunk when you're going to court, it's a terrible, you know, it's you you don't wanna risk losing those. And it's fairly common at some apartment complexes or homes, uh some rentals to have, if they finally, if you lose and you're put out, you don't have a right to take your stuff with you. It gets locked up, the writ's served. And if you come back, you're gonna be arrested for trespassing. You're trying to get your stuff back. Most landlords say, you're coming get it, but it's gonna be, you know, Friday afternoon between one and three and you better have a truck because once you get it, you know, we're gonna get everything else. It's fairly common to have that stuff picked over. Or I'm told it's been picked over, that, you know, the jewelry's gone or the electronics is gone. And whether it was the maintenance man or the property manager or a neighbor uh or, you know, a friend took it, uh sometimes it's gone. So I wouldn't go to court without having as much of that packed up in a car trunk as I could. A lot of people think they're gonna go to court and explain about non-payment and tell the judge why they didn't pay. And that the judge will give them more time. And it's uh very difficult to tell them that's not what's gonna happen. You know, I had open heart surgery four weeks ago and I need more time to pay. And that's not a legal excuse for non-payment. That's not it may be important to you and it's sympathetic to a lot of folks. But if the landlord's not willing to work with you on that, they're gonna put you out. Even when it's cold. And I know of one eviction lawyer that talked about uh senior citizens in wheelchairs were wheeled out to the sidewalk. And they call senior services for them and somebody comes and picks them up. It's 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 not pleasant and uh the risk is huge going to trial. Other kinds of questions I get, my lease is expiring. I want a new lease. The landlord says he's sorry to give you a new lease. What do I do? Do I have any legal recourse to get a new lease? And the answer is generally no. Uh just like you could leave after the end of the lease, the landlord can say, I want you to, I want you to leave. And I had I had a senior citizen had been in a house for twenty seven years and was uh in her late sixties. And a great relationship with the owner until the owner died and the owner's daughter took over and decided they didn't want that lady in there anymore. And I had to tell her, you don't have a defense. You've got a thirty day notice. The notice was valid. Uh it was, she had to come a month to month tenant. That's all it takes is a thirty day notice. And she had to go. And that's a that's a hard message to deliver. If you can't get an agreement with the new owner, then you're gonna have to move out. Another one that's fairly common, uh the landlord says he's selling the house, so I have to get out. But I I I'm I'm got eight months left on my lease. Do I have to get out? And the answer is no. The landlord's maybe selling the house. He's gonna sell up to somebody that has a tenant for eight months and I'd be happy to go to court for you on that one. That's a winner. Right? If you've got a written lease, there's eight months left on the lease. Uh and I I saw a judge, a prior vicious judge, hold a landlord in contempt for uh that landlord without a lawyer took the tenant to court. She lost and then she went and shut off the water and uh to get the tenant out. And that was, that was a problem for the landlord. The landlord says he wants to inspect the house or show the house for sale. I don't, I don't want anyone in my house. Do I have to let them in? Yeah, you gotta let them in. They gotta give you reasonable notice, like Nate says, probably twenty four hours. It can't be harassing. But you gotta let them in. Month to month tenant takes thirty days to move out, uh to get their notice on a rent paying date. I've had landlords that wanna get thirty days notice like on the tenth of the month when the rent paying date is on the first of the month. And that's probably defensible, right? That uh meaning if if you don't get out, I think that notice is invalid because if it didn't fall on a rent paying date. That mean the landlord can't sue you and roll the dice, but uh that should be an invalid notice. And a lot of these where they're defensible are landlords who are working without legal counsel on the other side. Because if I if I see that, uh and eventually they file addiction action. A lot of eviction cases, if they're defensible, can be resolved with a phone call and tell the lawyer, hey, here's a thirty day notice. It's in the middle of the month. It's not on the rent paying date. Dismiss a lawsuit and issue a issue a new thirty day. And sometimes that works out. And that gives somebody more time. It's hard to get a place. It's hard to move out, especially when you're a senior citizen or you're sick. And uh it's hard to find a new place now with rent, rent is uh increasing. And so sometimes buying the tenant a little extra time with getting one eviction lawsuit dismissed is it is is worth is worth doing. What about my security deposit? Um that's where Nate was saying photograph everything. There's a statute that says the landlord's supposed to do, you're supposed to walk through an inventory when you move in. That's statutorily required. There's no provision for what happens if it's breached for the tenant's own protection. You do those photographs, videos and do it when you leave. Because I've seen a number of cases where the tenant gets evicted. They're not sued for damages and then a year later they're sued for the back rent plus, you know, nine thousand dollars damage to the apartment, which is uh if they don't have the photos, they didn't do a walkthrough and the landlord says, well, you know, uh painting, carpet, damage to this, damage to that. And the tenant's going, I was in there for twenty years. I don't have buy some new carpet, right? And if, but if you can prove that, uh with your photos that uh the the condition of the apartment and you're gonna be in a lot better shape if you get sued for a landlord that wants to remodel the apartments. And I and I'm not making light of damage to apartments. I know landlords suffer damages from tenants who do bad things to the property. And they have the a legal recourse of suing the tenant for that. On buying a house under a rent to own contract and I missed a payment, can I be evicted? And generally, no. Generally, the eviction lawsuit is not for a contract for deed. They're gonna have to sue to foreclose on that, especially where you've been paying for years. I've got somebody that's been, you know, it's a rent to own contract or contract for deed for ten years of payments and they're on year seven. They haven't missed anything. And a landlord says, well, those really rent, so you're out. And actually, I need to foreclose and um there's a provision in Kansas law that says that landlord can come up with the amount or the owner of the property can come up with the amount. Calculate the amount due under the contract and give that person a chance to pay in a lump sum. But generally not in a eviction court. Questions for me of Kansas Legal Service?
This gave comparison.
Sure.
Had something that uh was spoken about before. So uh someone moved in with a uh support animals.
Yes.
And or claims, right?
Yeah.
And uh the documentation was done at move in, everything looks good.
Yeah.
But at move out, there's damage that was done by that animal. The landlord does have a right to be reimbursed for the damages caused by that animal.
In my view, yeah.
Okay.
You don't, you don't get a free destroyed a house animal.
Okay.
So no, no service animal pet deposit.
Yeah.
And it doesn't count as a pet for the number of pets. But you can't just, yeah, damage the property.
It was a pet deposit.
It doesn't count as a pet.
So there wouldn't be.
Correct.
Okay.
But that's separate from claiming damages later. And my apologies if I was unclear on that.
No, no, you were you were clear and and exactly what you were talking about. I was just thinking, wait a second. That doesn't ex- ex-
No, I know they excuse the damage, but I think what the landlord would need to do is sue the tenant for those damages.
Yeah.
And prove prove the damages out and have a lawsuit. Sometimes that's an eviction, part of eviction case. More often it's a lot of landlords will wanna wait until after the person's out, they regain possession of the house, they have a chance to inspect. And then they decide to sue later if the damages are not. And one of the things that I I see a lot is the tenant doesn't get any notice. This is a slightly separate issue. Any notice from the landlord in compliance with statute about what happened to the security deposit, landlord just won't do it. Won't won't bother to send a letter. A professionally managed place is always send a letter. Good land, conscientious landlords always send letters, for almost always. Sometimes there are landlords out there that just keep the deposit and don't worry about it. They figure the tenant's not gonna do anything about. And in which case, the tenant can sue in small claims for, if it's a thousand dollar deposit, say, so they'd be entitled to the thousand dollars back plus one and a half times that amount, which is twenty five, you know, total of twenty five hundred. And you see the landlord in small claims, the landlord may be counterclaiming, so there's some rest of that, but uh that's what the tenant can do when the the security deposit's wrong, they lift out. And the the it's like the landlord can, if on move out, there's damage to the place, the landlord could sue the tenant for damages, not only, but because sometimes security deposit's not gonna cover. A lot of times it's not gonna cover, especially, you know, that's been a a real problem. I've seen holes in, uh you know, I've seen holes in walls. Uh cleaning of feces from the basement from the dog that was kept down there on the carpet. But you know, then there's urine and then it got into the subfloor and and that was a, that was a big project for the landlord. It had been a nice house and a tenant was in trouble.
Um, she got the questions.
Yes.
She got this, she got this letter, um I just think it's that they were gonna go into their home and check for fire and plumbing inspection notice. And then they gave her the fourteen thirty that you were talking about.
I thought we talked afterward.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. I have a question. Um so I'm Abigail with the eviction resolution program in district court. Um but one thing that I have had a lot of tenants talking to me about lately are issues with, you know, multiple property management companies, the turnover there. And it seems like more property management companies have like one central location that have a lot of sites. And there might not be onsite management or office staff there very often. And it's very, very difficult for these tenants to try to talk to the property managers about issues or about trying to, you know, pay their back rent or make arrangements. What would you normally recommend for somebody?
So something that can be very hard, sending sending letters, you might wanna send a certified letter to the, you know, you can you can send it to the property address. You can also look up on the civic county. I mean, there's a way to find out who the owner is. But I'd be dealing with a property management company. I've had property management companies lose rent before and sue to evict. And then my uh client had proof of, you know, they they knew there was a problem and they photographed themselves delivering it to the mail office. That's like, that's hard argument, but I I, you know, anything you can do in writing is so much better than phone calls. I get so much, so many disputes about who said what to who. And there are real problems with trying to, you know, shifting management companies, people not returning calls. They won't let me text them. I have to go to the office and then they're not there. And the only, you know, getting it in writing, uh getting it in certi- through certified mail. And there may not be a good solution to that. There may be a, you've got a bad landlord and you really should be giving a fourteen thirty day notice to move out. And and planning on getting a new landlord because your contractual rights are hard to enforce for tenants. And they are hard to enforce and there there's no perfect resolution. And it's a whole lot better, in my own personal experience, to have a good landlord than a shady guy. Like the first, my first landlord was uh now, if you couldn't fix it with duct tape, he wasn't gonna fix it. And, you know, I I remember the morning, all the cockroaches hatched because they were in my medicine chest sucking on my toothbrush, missiles. And I was like, you know, uh uh it's bad. And then I've had a good landlord, you know, who everything was uh maintained very well and no problems. And if you, if you've got somebody that's not complying with their duties, trying to make them comply through a lawsuit or through, you know, the city wish the housing folks, that's a that's a not a good because the odds of a good result are are limited. Yes, ma'am.
My turn.
It's your turn. Solve our problems.
So again, I'm Kaylin Netherpot with Neighborhood Inspection with Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department. So out of curiosity, how many of you in the room have interacted with our division in some way? Yes. Yes. Um so I would make, I would just make clear that Steve and Nate are the legal experts. So we are not, we are not attorneys. We will not offer legal advice, particularly on civil issues. But what our role is to help resolve property maintenance concerns, okay? So um in general, so the group that I work with, just a little background, since not everyone's familiar with us. We're we're responsible for both housing and nuisance concerns in residential areas. We are a complaint based division. So we're gonna receive a complaint, we're gonna assign it to an inspector that's driven by the geographic area that it's located in, and they're gonna go out and take a look. Now, on housing concerns, um just a couple of finer points on that because that's really what we're talking about here is we we have to have legal access to the premises to be able to go into that structure. So what that means for you as a tenant is you can't submit an anonymous complaint. Right? We can take anonymous complaints on property conditions, on inoperable vehicles, on tall grass and weeds, on external housing conditions. Because we can see those, right? We cannot take an anonymous complaint for an interior concern on a house or apartment because we have no way legally to verify that, right? So the other thing is that if we receive a housing complaint and we have a contact person, you have to let us in. We we have to be able to verify, our inspectors have to be able to verify and document what you're seeing, what the concerns are. And that becomes part of a case for us because we work on a case management system. So legal access, invited in by a tenant, the ability to document. Now, that seems really straightforward, but sometimes tenants do not want to let us in. They wanna, they wanna express their concerns. They'd like for us to help resolve that, but they don't wanna let us in. And that can be for a variety of reasons. There may be people living in the in the in the house that aren't on the lease, right? There may be pets that aren't authorized to be there. There may be illegal activity that's going on inside the premises. And so they they want the problem resolved, but won't give us access. So we've, we've seen some things, okay? Say. Now, what happens for us and where we can help tenants is it's my understanding that the law is fairly broad on establishing a timeframe for resolving the problem, right? It, there's not specifics assigned, a re- it says reasonable, right? There is to be problems resolved in a reasonable timeframe. Gentlemen, am I right?
Fourteen, uh if if the tenant gets a fourteen thirty day notice, that means within fourteen days, the landlord has to make to begin a good faith effort to remedy the problem.
So fourteen days-ish to thirty days-ish. So in in our case management environment, we can issue what's called a notice of violation also with a very specific timeframe for compliance. Now, that timeframe for compliance is going to be based on the severity of the problems, okay? Um and I'm gonna keep this pretty high level just for these purposes and talk about process. So notice of violation is issued, sent via certified mail. So that we're we're sending it, we're using those legal resources to determine who the property owner is. Most of the time, we're gonna know who the property management company is, although not always. We're gonna send that formal notification by certified mail. But if we know those local contacts, our inspectors are also going to reach out and say, hey, did you know that apartment three oh two has no hot water? Okay, so we'd like to not really make that a more formal process than it have to be, than it has to be. How about you go fix that hot water tank and they've got hot water again? So we can get sometimes faster results in that way while we've still got our formal process going on, just in case we don't. But we can reach out and But we can reach out and try to get those problems resolved with those property managers on your behalf, right? So we're going to ask some questions when we receive that complaint and we have your contact information as a tenant. We're going to say, okay. So have you tried to resolve this with your, your landlord, your property management group? And that, so that's been unsuccessful. Can, can you kind of tell us how that looked? Did you call them? Did you put a sticky note on the door? Did you notify them writing? What was the mechanism that you used? Because that tells us what we're dealing with. Um, if the answer is no, I haven't even tried yet, I'm starting with you, then we're going to probably recommend that you reach out directly to your landlord. Because some of these things, we can overcomplicate them by putting them in a long process when a, when it's easier to resolve through a short process, right? So we're also going to ask. Are you being evicted? Okay, because if we're that late in the process. There's not going to be a terrible lot that we can do to help you. And here's why I say that. If we establish a thirty day timeframe for compliance to give the property owner time to resolve the issues and you're going to be out in fifteen days. Guess what? That's, that's not something that we can help with generally. You're going to need to have these other resources available to you at that time. Um, if we're, we're going to ask what I call some light questions about. Have you withheld rent? Have, yeah, held, we know. Because that's going to tell us then if we need to refer you to Kansas Legal Services, because you're going to ask about security deposits. You're going to ask about damages, you're going to ask about getting your things out and all this, that and the other, and we're going to tell you that's a civil issue, okay? Because our role is the property issues. It, it is not the legal and the civil issues. That's, that's where we're going to send you straight to Kansas Legal Services. Um, now, I will say in general, in general, our division handles about ten thousand cases a year. That's not all necessarily housing, that could be anything from residential. Uh, bulky waste, it can be inoperable vehicles on private property, it can be unfit habitation, it can be condemnations. Nuisance is by far our biggest case type. But overall, overall, we have about an eighty seven percent voluntary compliance rate. So what does that mean for you? That means that, that our processes work pretty well to get those problems resolved. They're not a hundred percent effective, but about eighty seven, eighty five, eighty seven percent of the time. We're going to get those problems resolved on your behalf without a, a lengthy legal process involved. Now, the thirteen percent of the time when it doesn't work, oh my gosh, we earn our money on those. We live in those cases, we live in those cases, and that's where we see repeat offender landlords, we see, um. Less than ideal living conditions, we see subprime rentals, those kinds of things that you, that you're going to. It just is a part of the metropolitan area, there's always going to be that. Um, but that is our role. Now, you may have questions, how do I submit a complaint? So again, we're housed in a county department, we're a city division and county department, so you will find us. On Sedgwick County's website, under Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department. So there's numbers, you can call us and submit that complaint in that, that way. There's a way you can submit it online and it will go directly to the inspector that's assigned to the address where the problem is. Um, you can, you can work through a council member liaison. You can go to a local neighborhood, um, community center and report a concern in that way. There's multiple ways for you to contact us. And remember, we are complaint driven. We want to know about those problems. That's what we do, is to try to help and resolve those. So again, that's kind of a very quick, broad brush stroke on, on what we do. And I would ask if you have any questions, not about specific addresses. That's always my, that's always my caveat is with ten thousand cases, I can't just whip those details out. About the blue house on the corner and the streethouse, you know what I mean? So just, but any other questions for neighborhood inspection?
Your services cost anything or they're free?
Yes, they are. Yes, they are. We enforce minimum housing code. Um, there's a number, it's, it's, we enforce several things. If you're interested, because I'm kind of a nerd, right? So I'm going to read city code. If you're a nerd too and you want to read up on city code, you can go to wichita.gov. And look under city codes, you can go straight to minimum housing, it'll tell you exactly what the expect, it'll tell you about grass. It'll tell you what the expectations are for vehicles, streetways, rodents, bugs, pests. So you can self educate on all of that stuff on the city's website. Yes, sir.
We're thinking, get the house of the code. By a certain length of time.
Thank you for asking that. That's a great question. So the question was, what if the, the violations aren't corrected to code in a certain length of time? So for housing cases, our next step is going to be to move that case into environmental court. You heard Nate speak earlier about the fact that he's prosecuted in environmental court. So we're going to take that landlord, we're going to invite them to come to court. And talk with the judge about what's causing the delays in getting things resolved. Um, now, I will tell you that we're going to try to do whatever we can to have reached resolution before it goes to environmental court. Because that is a lengthy process that, that takes a while, um.
Well, and part of that too is, yeah, and it. Part of that too is you all do a really good job of still, even in court. Continuing to work with the property owners to maximize compliance. Since the goal really is to get everybody up to code, it's not to just sling around a bunch of like nuisance fines. Or something like that. That doesn't make the city all that much better.
No, I, and, and just to echo what Nate said, just remember, our goal, we're, we're not necessarily in, in the business of punishing. Those landlords, that's not what we're about. But we are in terms, we are about getting compliance for those code issues. That are affecting your quality of life as a tenant in those structures, okay?
From the tenant's perspective, in my view, the tenant wants the city to get a baseball bat. Because they're tired of, and that's not what happens. It's, it's slow. And the landlord's going to say, listen, you know, I need another thirty days to get, you know, this done, and they're going to get the thirty days. And it's, it, it's, it's not. If it's voluntary compliance, I've had a case where. The housing inspector called up, knew who the property manager landlord was, called him up and yelled at him. That's what my tenant said, they're there and then. You know, you get that turned back on. And they did, and that was the best possible resolution to happen that day. And so there's no lawsuit, there was no nothing. It just, it's fixed, it got fixed. But if the landlord's dragging his feet. It's hard to make somebody not drag their feet, and eventually the city will get them, but it.
It can take a while.
It can take a while.
Yeah, it can take a while to do that. Yes.
Uh, ten thousand cases a year, right? We know that there are some people who are very dedicated to their histrionics and go about, uh. Submitting massive amounts of complaints to your department. Is there a level at which, uh, like, do you go out and tend to those right away? Or, or do you say, look, we've had, uh, this is the first time we've heard of a complaint about this house, we aren't going to do anything until we've had. It's been substantiated by multiple complaints, or is it the first complaint you got to go?
So that is a good question. Um, so. The, it's kind of like, what, what makes us go out, right? Is it, is it a bunch of complaints? Is it one complaint? So one of the beautiful things about working in a case management system is you have history, right? You have a lot of history on properties. You can see how many times we've had to force mow it. We can see how many housing complaints. Have we boarded it up? Had, you know, what have we done? So we can see, um. For example, if we've already gotten a complaint on it, we have an active case. Then we're going to, we're going to reply to that complaint as existing case. We already knew about it, we're already on it, it's already in some kind of a process. In, in other instances, we are going to go out on a complaint about a property. If we can't see in our system that we've already got some action on it. Now, we may not, depending on the severity, and I'll use this as an example, surfacing sewage, we're going to be right there. There's, the house needs to be painted, or there's a tree limb in the yard. That's not going to be our quickest first get out, right? You know what I mean? So we're going to check them all out in about the first seventy two hours, depending on when we get them. And then the action we take after that is going to be driven by the severity of what we see. But certain things are more severe than, um, others. Now, I think, Richard, what you're, what you're getting at is the kind of, uh. Every neighborhoods have people who keep a close eye on things. Really, really close eye. And so sometimes we'll see a, a, you know, a, a wave of complaints come through and they're in about a three block area. So we'll know at that point in time that someone has been out driving around. And they have noticed all the things that need code enforcement attention in that three block area. Sometimes that's driven by the fact that their property needed attention, right? So then it becomes, well, mine is that, my, yeah, mine, but look at all these other ones. So we're going to go out and take a look, but just keep in mind, if there are no violations, if there's no, no code issues on those properties. We're not going to open a case. We're not going to notify anyone. We're just going to take a look and go, okay, that was invalid, that's not a. That's not a concern, that's not something we can address, and we're going to just move on. So does that kind of help answer your question a little bit? I know, I, I understand exactly what you're talking about.
Kaylin, I have a quick question. So if conditions in a home are so poor that the city has, I've heard people talk about it being placarded.
Yes.
Is the tenant forced to move or are they allowed to remain in the home?
So if we, if we placard a home, what that means is that once it becomes vacant. It cannot be occupied again until corrections are made. We, we generally don't placard occupied homes, uh, because it is a little scary to tenants. If there are life safety issues, um, that would prevent them from being there safely. Then we're going to work to help them get relocated and those kinds of things. But usually it's overall repairs that need to be made at the time that the home is vacant, before somebody can move back in. That kind of answer, yeah. Once it becomes vacant, it has to stay vacant and build. And by the way, moving people in over a placard, that's frowned upon. Don't do that, okay? But don't, don't, if you see a big orange sticker that says. Dangerous and unsafe structure, housing violation, there's, there's multiple kind, don't, don't go in that house. Don't rent it, don't, don't engage in it at all, because that's a problem, okay?
Yes, um, is mold a code violation, like mold in the walls or ceilings or anything?
No, it is not. So I'm glad you asked. There's been a lot of attention given to mold in the last two weeks, more than I've seen in the first five years that I've done this. So minimum housing codes do not specifically address mold. But what they do address is water sources, okay, leaks. So if you have an apartment above you that's leaking. And it's generating water damage in your area, you have a leaky faucet, you have a leaky toilet, you have a leaky bathtub. So mold can't grow if it doesn't have water. So what we're going to do is try to figure out what's the source of that water. And once that's, that problem is eliminated, the mold has nothing to grow on, right? Now, I understand the health challenges with mold, I get that. But the way our codes are written, that's the way we, we would address that issue. Yes, ma'am.
How are the codes decided? Is it like a city ordinance or like a county decision?
Uh, minimum housing codes are set at the, at the city level, yeah. Your elected officials, okay, your council members, your county commissioners. Establish code and then they hand those, the short version, they give those to staff to enforce.
But you all work with the county as part of their department, right?
Yes, yes, we're.
A lot of, a lot of spillovers.
We're one of the lucky groups that, that we, we answer to two sets of elected. Because we're a joint city, county, one. Now, just a follow on question to the, to the mold question. So you may ask, okay, once we get that leak corrected, then what happens? Then that is between the tenant and the landlord as to how that problem gets further remediated. Okay, so does that, what does that look like? Do they hire a professional company? Do they do it themselves? Do they have a tenant do it? That, that part becomes hopefully spelled out in the lease, what those expectations are, but that's not always the case. But that becomes more civil. Would I be correct in that way? Yeah, my attorney friends.
And I mean, sometimes just on that point, and it's not specifically in the code, but. There are other parts too that maybe suggest whose responsibility something in the walls or in the foundation might be. But it doesn't really get, you know, mold maybe is in both of those places, like outside and inside. So it doesn't provide necessarily the clarity, but sometimes you can rely on other. Uh, we would sometimes look to the code to maybe figure out. Whose responsibility something might be based on its physical location or something like that.
Yes. Yes, sir.
Speaking of the mold issue, with that, I mean, we know it's a health issue. Now, you said that's not a code violation. Now, why wouldn't the city or, or why wouldn't the code say that it's an issue? I mean, why wouldn't it be in the code? Why wouldn't it be?
You know, that's a great question. My, and, and my answer would be, maybe it should be. Um, there's some, certainly some review of those codes going on right now. But as the codes are written right now, it does not give us any enforcement capability to address that issue. We, we address the root cause of it, which is the moisture. Um, and because that's, that's what we have to work with in terms of codes and enforcement.
Well, you know, and my other question, and some of the question is that, once the problem is done, same consensus, uh, a landlord has a house and not go to rent it. There was mold there, there was mold there.
Don't rent it.
That's already, that, once, I didn't know that mold didn't tell, I discovered once I got there, then what is the remedy for that then? Is that still a, a tenant issue or is that a city issue?
That's still, that's going to be a civil issue at that point in time, unless there's a, a leaking water source that we can identify and compel them to repair.
Yeah, because see, as the contract before, there are some things is that. You wouldn't know, I mean, once the problem is fixed, you don't know it's there until you discover.
So if you know ahead of time, don't rent it. That's my first advice. Um, but after the fact. My advice would be to try to resolve that issue with the landlord first. So that you don't become at risk for all of these eviction issues that we've talked about. You would only want to probably involve code enforcement then as a last resort, okay?
And maybe just real quick on your point as well, um, from the city perspective, uh. We, we wouldn't. Ever pay back the tenant for any harm either. So even if we're, the city's able to address a water source. And even if the landlord is fined, maybe that won't make the tenant whole, so there's still this whole civil law. Looking through the lease agreement, enforcing your rights, all that sort of stuff too. So it, it does kind of separate a little bit in that regard.
Yeah, we are really just the property people. I, you know, we cannot protect you from eviction, we can't guarantee you that you won't have. The landlord will have something else to say about you calling us and involving us, but there are other resources for you if that happens.
I, I can tell you that if you're going to, if you're a tenant and you're. Want to sue the landlord for breach of warranty of habitability. It is helpful to have a housing inspection notice of violation listing. And that's a potential witness that could be subpoenaed with photographs. And that's not just a tenant saying, oh, there's a problem here, here's the problem. It's a professional inspector from the government saying. This is a housing code violation, affected, material affected health and safety. And that's sort of a neutral third party who can provide evidence about the, uh, whether the landlord was in breach of the. Uh, of the lease and the statute. So I like him, I, I hope my people can get in before. An eviction action is fourth, you know, and avoid that, but, uh. And I, I, I've had tenants try to get an inspection for their counter, anticipated counterclaim in an eviction action. And that, uh, they're too close to eviction and the inspection doesn't happen.
Yeah, that is, that is a real concern. So, yes, sir.
Uh, during the, um. Eviction or the lawsuit or whatever the landlord and tenant, uh. I went through this though, but, uh. The inspector that he was talking about, is they supposed to go out to dinner with the landlord?
No.
In my case, it happened, uh.
Oh yeah, but you got specific.
They got the house up to code.
If you have, say, you have a specific property concern, I'm happy to talk with you after this fact.
Okay.
So.
Oh, I was going to say, sorry.
I have one more question.
Yes, sir.
There is a list, uh, that, um. If you've been evicted, you get on a list that says that you've been on the eviction list. Is that, is that? And by the city.
Kind of, uh, so. You have an eviction judgment against you. That's a public record.
Okay.
So that's, it's not criminal either, so there's no like. Regular, we think, yeah, there's not a way to get rid of it. And it's public. I don't know, some places do put lists together, maybe. But I think anymore, it's a lot more like background searches or just like searches of public records or credit history and related things like that.
Now, on the flip side of the coin, is there a list for landlords that doesn't abide by or, you know, the rules. Say, and so you have a landlord that's. you know, the rules, say, instance, you have a landlord that's constantly, people complaining, is there a list, is something there, are they on such a list with the city, or is that such as public record as well?
Nothing, nothing I'm aware of.
Well, and the city doesn't have a list of, um, I think, issues that we've had other than just our regular records of working at any given property. Those aren't immediately public, I would say, like, immediately accessible, though they are generally open records. So they are available to the public through the regular kind of record request process. We don't like keep them in a, in a place that's like always open to the public necessarily, but we can set that up as required. Um, but it is, it is just a little more difficult too, because then we've got different owners. Is the property management the company that sued? Right? Maybe not the owner then, so then the record wouldn't reflect that. It's just a lot hard to do that kind of background check sort of collection. But I mean, as we just, and I'll just say generally, as we enforce things through the city, we do become familiar with certain places, as happens to be the case. So, um, and how landlords have acted in the past can affect their avail- like whether they qualify for certain programs or benefits, just like with tenants. But not, I think, not a list problem.
Well, maybe that's a little harsh word to use.
No, 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 for sure, for sure. But, and things are just so much more scattered informationally now too.
Because, you know, as a landlord, you know, I can go use that list to check out the potential tenant. So I think there should be a, a reverse situation where the tenant can say, hey, this landlord has a history of doing this and doing that. Of course, you still have the choice to, to rent the property or not. But they should, I think it should be equally that, hey, we, these people here are not doing it, so they have multiple code violations in the house, they've done this, we had to go out this and this and that. You know, I, I think it should be this, the same way as for, as, as far as tenants being able to check out landlords as well. But I mean, I quote, as a landlord, as a tenant, I do have due diligence to check out other weddings.
Yes, you do. So Logan, I think we're getting close to the end of our time here. If there are any other, we'll stick around, I mean, we'll, we'll be around. Yes, ma'am?
I was thinking, um, is, my question is about the windows. I'm living in a dumb house. Uh, I have a little kicks. We can, we can open the windows, we can, what happening in case of a fire?
So she's saying she, uh,
Can't get the windows open?
Yeah, for the past eight years, we've spent time with her landlord to fix them. So she wants to know if that's an issue that
It is.
She could call you.
Yes. I'll give you my card. It has our number where you can call and submit a complaint.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so we're coming to the end of our time. Um, I think, uh, all the panel members have offered to stay after and talk about specific issues, or if you have any additional questions. Um, I just wanna thank you from the Housing and Community Services Department for coming out, um, and participating in this Tenant Rights Town Hall, and I hope you guys have a great day.
Thanks for everything.
Thank you. Thank you guys too.
Of course, thank you much love.